Call this meeting to order on Tuesday, April 25th at 6:33. Call this meeting to order on Tuesday, April 25th at 6:33. Please rise for the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence. Just got word this week that we lost a former teacher from our district. Could not know some of the older students might have had him. His name is Mr. Bill Cox. Taught history for over thirty-some years at the high school. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have, please, roll call?
Mr. Archuleta?
Here.
Mr. Dryling?
Here.
Mrs. Quintana?
Here.
Mr. Rola?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Moving on to the approval of the minutes. I need a motion for the approval of April 11th, 2017 minutes.
So moved.
Second. Okay, is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryling?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Need a motion for the approval of April 18th, 2017 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryling?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to the approval of the agenda. Before we approve it, there must be, there's a need for amending the agenda. There is a need to amend the agenda this evening under Business 2.10 to add the Resolution 17-005 calling for a credit recovery fee charge in Adams 14.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryling?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
I need a motion for the approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryling?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
At this time, we will move on to audience comments. Just want to remind you that under audience comments, you must state your name. You have three minutes to speak and you will not, you cannot cease your minutes to anyone else. All comments need to be district-related. Your comments can suggest improvements but should be productive. You can provide written statements to the board for review. The president can recognize board members or the superintendent to respond to questions to clarify a district's position. At this time, we have Anna Laura.
Buenas tardes. Lo que yo quiero comentar y no estoy de acuerdo es, si es así, ¿por qué se va a cambiar el horario de Kearney?
Good afternoon and my comment is, or question is, why you guys are changing the schedule for a Kearney Middle School?
Sí, he oído comentarios de que este próximo año escolar se va a cambiar a de horario de las nueve y no estoy de acuerdo debido a que muchos de los padres trabajamos y no, no se acomoda al horario en que estamos acostumbrados. Llevamos a nuestros hijos temprano a la escuela y después nos vamos a trabajar. Entonces, ¿qué es lo que va a pasar ahora?
And I'm not agreeing with this. I heard many comments that the schedule will be changed and the students will be starting at nine o'clock. This new schedule does not work for many of us as a parents because we work. And first thing in the morning, we leave the kids at school and we have to go to work. This doesn't work for many of us.
Quisiera saber el motivo de por qué es que lo van a cambiar, si es que es así.
And I would like to know the reason why you guys are changing it if this is for real.
Y también, no estoy de acuerdo en que tengo dos hijos en Adams City High School y yo creo que es, no están atendiendo los comentarios que ellos les están haciendo. Precisamente este día ellos hicieron una marcha porque ya están cansados de que no, no les atiendan a lo que ellos les están pidiendo.
And the other, the other comment that I have for you guys is that I have two kids at the high school and I don't see that you guys are listening their concerns. They had to walk out today and what I'm asking is that you guys listen their concerns.
Y también quiero saber por qué durante la mitad del año escolar de high school no, ellos no tienen un director, ¿qué es lo que está pasando?
And I would like to know why. In middle of the year, the principal was removed and they don't have a principal right now and I would like to know what is happening.
Y también quiero que, por favor, si me pudieran decir qué, qué es lo que se puede hacer para que ustedes puedan atender los comentarios de los alumnos o qué está pasando, por qué no, no los atienden, qué es lo que se puede hacer.
And I would like to know if you guys are gonna listen to the student comments or what can we do.
Es todo, muchas gracias.
That's it, thank you.
Next individual will be Barb McDowell.
Good afternoon, President Rola, Superintendent Dr. Abrego, distinguished members of the board. My name is Barb McDowell, 303 Bridget Drive, North Glen. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Classroom Teachers Association. About a month and a half ago, I came in and asked to, for the board, to create a resolution regarding the immigration status of our students. We, our district, with the largest percentage of language learners in this state, which goes, stands to reason. We probably also have the most number of immigrants, whether they're documented or undocumented. Even those students who are no longer English language learners, they have graduated from the ELD, they still have parents who may or may not be documented or undocumented immigrants. I have sample language that I would like you guys to present. I'm not certain why, this is not being addressed. We could talk about if we happen to lose these students to the district just to the south of us who have created a resolution. That would mean we would lose the money, we would lose, we would lose the students, we would lose the money. And if that's what we care most about is the money, then, okay. We would lose that money, we could close some schools. And then I'm not sure what we would need in here if we don't even have our students here. I'm asking you to do this because this is what's right for our students. I've talked about the behaviors that have escalated because our children are unsure. They're, they feel unsafe. They don't, and it's, they don't, they feel unsafe for their own safety, for their parent's safety, for their family's safety. Siblings who've had to leave, parents who have had to leave, they've asked questions, what am I supposed to do? And I'm asking you to protect the rights of our students by creating some kind of a policy that we are a safe zone and what happens in this school, our children are safe no matter what and we're going to protect them. That's all I'm asking you to do. I have samples of resolution language if you would like. May I hand it to you?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, can you hand me my folder?
Thank you. Thank you.
I do realize my time is up, but please, let's create something that is in the best interest of all of our students here in Adams 14. Thank you.
Next individual, Sergio Santiago.
Hi, I'm Sergio Santiago, I'm a current sophomore at Adams City High School. And I just wanted to speak on, on my behalf and the general, the general population at the school. And I wanted to speak of the inconsistency that's occurring at our school with not just our principals, our admins and our APs or, or assistant principals. We wanted to know, or I wanted to know actually, why we're changing so much, why we don't decide on who we want as the leader at our school? Why can't we better the ones that we have at our school right now? I do know that some of the teachers that are qualified to apply for the AP position did apply for it from our school and none of them were accepted. And I would know, I would wanna know why this is happening. And I wanted to ask David Rola. You've been here the longest out of everyone here, so you're the overseer of them. And I wanna know why, out of like all this time, like, why you haven't changed much? Like, you've changed but not, never for, like, nothing has been done for what, I think it is five to six years? And I wanna know why as the overseer of them, as everyone in the, in the school board, you haven't changed things for the better 'cause you'd oversee them and nothing has changed, nothing has changed for the high school. Like, the inconsistency is still there and we all know it, as you can see. We all realized it and came too much here to that ESS building. And obviously you didn't show up, but that's all the concern I had for today. Thank you.
Carlos Barrera.
Hi, I'm Carlos Barrera, a current junior at Adams City High School. I wanted to talk to you guys about the same thing about the inconsistency, about the admin. Earlier today during our protest, Dr. Barrago and Mr. Archuleta stated that our admin were constantly fired and rehired due to them not properly executing their job. But my question to you guys is, how can we expect an administrator to properly perform their job and do, make all these changes you expect from them if they are not given the proper amount of time? And in such, such, such short time that the high school has new people coming in and out. For an example, this would be our current athletic director, Joe Ledau, who in my three years there has made the most changes and most beneficial to the athletic department in many ways and just keeping all of our athletes and making a better eligibility report for the athletes and just keeping us all on track. But yet, he seems to not even get an interview to reapply for his position. And yeah, that'll be it.
Vida Vera.
My name is Vidi Vera and I'm a junior at Adams City High School. You stated at the staff meeting last week at Adams City High School that the qualifications that you were looking for in a principal were that they had turnaround experience and that they had previous experience as a principal. Ms. Schwartz met the qualifications of working in a turnaround school and she was an assistant principal. And yet, the board denied her despite the majority ruling of the committee, student, staff, and superintendent that she should be principal. So I guess my question is, did you guys not want her because she's a white female? The district has had to pay millions of dollars in discrimination claims and the same thing happened a few years ago with Shelley Robbins, where she was qualified and yet she was denied the principal position due to her race. David Rola has stated at previous board meetings that he wants Latino teachers in the school so that they fit into the community. Yet, the majority of students and staff would rather have a qualified principal rather than one who's the same race. I look forward to hearing your response at our Wednesday meeting, Dr. Abrego, and I hope you know that this question will come again. Thank you.
Virginia Valverde.
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 Good evening, members of the board. My name is Virginia Valverde and I'm a Hanson teacher. My address is 3722 East 101st Avenue in Thornton, Colorado, 80229. First of all, I want to thank you because we stood in front of you in, in January and we really wanted to let you know that we were supporting of our principal, Les Valeras, and her resignation when she handed it to you. We were opposed to it and you listened to us. Thank you. On that note, we know that we are in process of hiring a new principal at Hanson and we would like to also let you know that we were not involved in the process, very little was our input, just like parent and myself. I'm a parent and also a teacher at Hanson. And my child does not belong to this district. I choose for my child to come to this district. So therefore, I feel like my opinion should be valued much more so because I am a teacher and also I'm a parent. So when the committee was chosen for the new principal, I was not part of the committee. There was volunteer teachers who wanted to be part of the committee and were not asked to be part of the committee. So for me, not to be part of this is huge. I, except for one. But I, I, again, the communication, the, are you listening to teachers? Are you listening to students? I'm, we're hearing this over and over again. We are just, we're, we're advocating for everybody, but we also want you to hear our voices. You're hearing the voices behind me, you're hearing teacher voices. So please listen, because we are here for the kids. We're not here to be anything but the best we can be. So please listen to us. We are urging you to listen and please, there's, there's so much we can do to improve this district. And with our help, this is where, where we should go. Listen, listen to students, listen to parents, listen to your teachers. Because if we're gonna make this district a well-deserved district that you want our scores to go high, you need to listen to us. So we're advocating, and I'm advocating for everybody here. Thank you.
Heavenly Skaggs.
Hi, I'm, hi, I'm Heavenly Skaggs, I'm a junior at Adams City High School. I'm here to advocate for the gifted and talented program. Students like myself have been labeled gifted and talented. With that, we're told that we are, we need special attention and enrichment. Yet, there's a lack of programs to provide enrichment for the, for said high school students. For both middle school and elementary students, there's amazing programs. There's stuff like summer programs and things along those lines. Yet, for high school students, we have nothing, nothing to enrich us and even, we're supposed to have a GT program that's supposed to check in on us, that's supposed to make it where we have almost like an advanced program for us that we need. Yet, we don't have one. We have a broken one. We are told that there's a lot of funding that's supposed to go to it, yet we don't have it. But the issue that comes to that, when I asked about it, when I asked the GT coordinators at our school, was we have no admin to do it. Our, with the lack of consistency within the admin, it makes it where we don't have a GT program to rely on. And so for kids like me, for kids like the GT students at my school, we are kind of giving, we're kind of given the oh well. And that's not okay. It'll never be okay. And it's something that is extremely important for kids like us because if we're not given that, it's when kids fall through the cracks because they're not engaged and they're not given the same, the opportunities that they need. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Adrian Schimpf.
My name is Adrian Schimpf. I'm coming as a parent, as a taxpayer, and as a community member and I would like to know what's going on at the high school. You've been on the board for six years and we've had five principals and this year we have no principal. I was extremely appalled last week, or last meeting. We have Mr. Thompson, who was the principal of a high school, up here getting grilled because he's in a maintenance position. Let me explain his qualifications. He's a principal. We're budgeted for a principal. You wanna harp on budget, you have a budget for a principal. You have a very good principal in a maintenance position. What are you doing? Look at your board goals. Number four, to recruit and maintain the best qualified and well-trained workforce. You're failing miserably. Why? I find it just coincidental and I really wanna know. At the beginning of the year, the board president was brought forth for some issues regarding services received at the high school. Shortly thereafter, one of his representatives was at the school disrupting things. Not a parent, not an employee, yet he's allowed to disrupt. And then shortly thereafter, Mr. Thompson is removed from the high school. What are you doing? Your students are telling you what's going on. They tried to meet with you last week and I believe the response was, are you done yet? This is a joke. I'll tell you what, you are failing these students. I want you to look at those pictures. Those pictures were put up there five years ago. You should turn around, you should look at those faces. You should be writing an I'm sorry letter 'cause you've ruined their educations personally. You are not leading this district. Who's gonna wanna work here? You had a very good candidate here that at the last minute you removed from being hired. What are you trying to hide from the last administration is my question. Be honest, be forthright, have an investigation, independent one, I asked for before. I doubt you'll do it 'cause you're just gonna continue the same route. It's an embarrassment, stop embarrassing this community. Number one on here, to ensure all students will be at or above grade level. Tell me how you're succeeding on that. You're not. Now you're bringing in another program that's gonna be taken out of the budget. So when you make your budget, where are these teachers gonna come from? We're not gonna have them. Again, what are you doing? Should you just turn this over to the state? Because right now, I can not see a future for this district. You cannot succeed. Who's gonna wanna work here? And the last question I have is, at the last meeting, some Monaco parents brought forth a, an issue. An issue that if you followed your past precedents and your policies, should have been investigated by Human Services. I would like some confirmation that that has been done for abuse and neglect. Something you seem to have a real, a real thing for, Mr. Rola. I want some proof and I'd like it responded to in community response, which coincidentally, there is no community response listed on your agenda. Thank you.
Trini Onellis.
Good afternoon. I'm a current sophomore at Adams City High School and my question is around the same administration thing. So according to the state review panel report that was released in last August, they, they recommended that there was consistency in the administration. So I'm wondering of why if they recommended consistency in administration, of why you guys ignored it and why you guys made all the current administration reapply for their jobs and you guys only pushed one administration through. And my other question is, are the eighth graders, the incoming freshmen, gonna be supported as freshmen at our high school if we don't even have an administration team at our school? 'Cause I have a lot of brothers like in eighth grade. I just don't know if they'd be better off in our district or another district. So, thank you.
Andrea Hernandez.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Andrea Hernandez. I am a current senior at Adams City High School. I'm sure all of you saw our protest today. We marched an hour and a half in the heat and then marched back, some of us, in the rain. To start with, I just wanted to say that our protest was not to create chaos and it was not to create any anxiety within the board, but it was to make sure that you realize that we will not stay silent. Mr. Rola, with all due respect, you were here today and you didn't even come up here to acknowledge us. Thank you, Mr. Archuleta, for answering all of our questions and Mr. Abrego for standing beside him. Mr. Rola, I would like to ask you, I see that you're assigned to Adams City High School. I am very involved, I am student body treasurer of Adams City High School. I am battalion commander for MCJR OTC and I have yet to see you at any of our functions. I see Mr. Archuleta a lot and he's not assigned to Adams City High School, so I would just love to see you around more. I'm graduating two weeks, but I wish that you would come in the following year. And with that, I would like to end with, I hope that you would reconsider allowing another keynote speaker to speak at our graduation just because I feel like we need someone who has seen us grow as a senior class and who has attended a lot of our events. I don't feel that, honestly, that you would be very inspirational or qualified for our graduation speech, but if you do need signatures, I am more than welcome to bring them to you at the next board meeting on behalf of our senior class. Thank you and good night.
Angelica Gutierrez.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, and community members. My name is Angelica Gutierrez, junior class vice president at Adams City High School. During the school year 2015 and 2016, and especially last semester, the leadership, leadership team at, such as administrators at Adams City High School, has been the best yet. With the help of Mr. Thompson, we were able to do so much for the students. Speaking as a student council member, we, we've been able to make events that students were excited to go to. Thompson had the trust of the students, parents, and the staff at the high school. We were all sad to see Thompson leave us, but we were happy for him because he was promoted to a higher position within the district. His duty was to look over the middle schools and the Adams City, the middle schools and Adams City High School. We were excited to see him do just as a good job he was, as he was at Adams City High School. Unfortunately, however, he was not given the position he was told to and he was, he is now looking over transportation and buses in the district. Why did this happen and why was he taken out of the high school if he was doing great as an administrator? Isn't, isn't that what we need after all if we are on our last moments of turnaround? Yesterday, April 24th, at the super, the superintendent went to meet with a couple of students about the walkout that happened today. We were happy to see, we were happy that he went to meet with us. We were left with sort, left sort of concerned. It took us three weeks in advance to schedule a meeting with the board and the superintendent so we can ask some questions, but we were left wondering why they were so quick to meet with us once we started planning a protest. Not only that, but Mr. Thompson was invited to the meeting. Was it because they know that they have our trust and they knew that maybe we'd speak up or maybe back out from our plan? To conclude this, we're asking for a principal at Adams City High School who will work for the students like Johnny Thompson did. I hope that, I hope to get some answers at the meeting with student council tomorrow. It is not, it is now the time to be transparent with the students and the community. Thank you.
Angelica Herrera.
Good evening, fellow board members, superintendent, and community members. My name is Angela.
My name is Angela Herrera and I am a sophomore at Adam City High School. I hope you guys are doing wonderful today, as I am not, and therefore I'm here to voice what discontents me. Just a little background on me before I start on my concerns though. Not only am I just any individual in the sophomore class, I am the president that delegates to student council for my class. I just started playing volleyball. I am also part of the MCJ ROTC program and through that I was able to join the drill team. This year, I also tried out and was a part of the musical grease. And last but certainly not least, I am taking honors and AP courses. As many would think, I am a pretty outstanding student and shouldn't really have many concerns except probably stress. However, that is not the case. Although I am very well-rounded and have many things going for me in the future, it looks like, I am scared for what is to come. You see, the issue that haunts me and my school companions is that of who is to guide us in the process of applying to colleges, FAFSA, scholarships, and grants? Or who is to help us find what college is best fit to pursue our dreams? Since Inspire seems to no longer be an option and a lot of passionate people who genuinely care for a student's successfulness are leaving, who do we go to? Our counselors are barely able to keep the students who are sleeping through the cracks on track. How are they supposed to keep well-rounded and amazing future leaders and doctors on track as well? I don't really know what could be done, but me as a student, young adult, and leader in my community, ask you the board and superintendent to keep on funding programs such as Inspire and GEAR Up. Programs that don't just spend money on insignificant things. Programs that are essential to us, students, and build up our knowledge on how to invest into our future to make the most out of our life. Thank you. Have a good night.
Oh, what is it? Jalea Garza.
Hi, I'm Jalea Garza from Adam City High School. I'm a junior. And I'm here to speak also on the inconsistency of our admin. There's a lack of representation of our races of admin. We only had two African-American admin and they're both gone. You guys talk of diversity, but some of you guys are pushing a Hispanic and probably male. And if these are assumptions and they're wrong, this is all you guys leave us with. You guys speak of diversity as you guys did when you guys came to our board meeting as it's only one race. And it can only leave us to assume what you guys are looking for as a principal for us. We've had our diversity. We've had our, we have admin like Guardiola that brings and puts all of us together, not only by race, but he's being taken out of the building. And he is the only person I can tell you that helps us with post-secondary programs which are being cut. So I think what we all need is to get rid of our assumptions and for answers about why are you getting rid of certain admin. Thank you.
Geneva Gonzalez.
Hi, board members. My name is Genevieve Gonzalez and I am a junior at Adam City High School. I'd like to address you guys first of all by saying something that I've repeated so many times this week, but I haven't had the chance to tell you. Students do not learn from people or listen to people they don't like. And that's just a fact. And for the board to constantly remove our admin and change them, every year since I've been here and principals, that's a new person that has to come in and learn our names. That's a new person that has to come in and learn about us. And what does that do for us? You guys talk about wanting somebody in positions where they can do something for us, but how are they going to do that? That's my question, is when they don't know us. And you guys talk about, also talk about wanting people in these positions that know more about our students when you guys don't even know about our students. You have no idea what we experience in the high school. You're not even there. So I propose that instead of changing our admin, let them continue going on instead of putting Band-Aids on top of things to cover it up. And maybe come to our school, come sit in classrooms, come engage with students, come and talk to us so that you can understand the students. We are students, yes, but we know what's best for us because we're the ones who experience all of this going on in the high school. We're the ones that it affects. The CDE had acknowledged that teachers, the teacher turnover rate was 30% in 2015 and 22% in 2016, which is significantly, significantly bigger than surrounding areas. So my question is, what are you doing to make sure that, to increase teacher retention? That's my one question too. And I propose that you guys help us instead of belittling us as well. And that you help us keep programs such as Inspire, keep admins such as Mr. Guardiola, and keep admin that we already know. Because bringing new people in just, it does nothing to build our trust and build our trust in you. Because as of right now, the students of Adam City have no trust in you. Thank you.
Giselle Perez.
Hi, my name is Giselle Perez and I'm a current junior at Adam City High School. And my question to you is, why are you getting rid of programs that increase our graduation rate and increase any chance of us actually turning over the school as you guys say? Like you guys talk about how you're worried about how low our test scores are or how low our graduation rates are as Mr. Timo Archeletta and Mr. Abrego stated at our walkout today. But you guys are getting rid of programs such as Inspire and those are the programs that help us most and students relate to them most. And you guys are firing people that we connect to the most and I just, I'm wondering why. And that'll be all. Thank you.
Guadalupe Villalobos.
Buenas tardes a todos. Yo me llamo Guadalupe Villalobos. Tengo cinco hijos. Este, tres de mis hijos se han graduado aquí en Adam City High School. Tengo mi cuarto hijo aquí en el once grado y mi pequeño hijo lo tuve que poner en el distrito doce precisamente por todo esto que estamos escuchando que sucede aquí. Yo quería ver qué...
Good afternoon. My name is Guadalupe Villalobos and I have five kids here, five kids. Four of them, they went through Adam City High School. Three of them graduated from Adam City High School. One of them is still in the district. And my youngest, I decided to take him away to Adams 12. And the reason why is because everything what is happening right now.
Hee podido notar la gran diferencia de tener mi hijo en ese distrito y para mí de verdad que es una vergüenza escuchar a través de tantos años como nos utilizan a nosotros los padres. Es una falta de respeto para mí como madre.
I can see the difference among the two districts. And it's embarrassing what is happening here and it's so bad the way that you guys are treating us as, as parents.
Siento que es como un show de ponis para mí cuando nos invitan a participar en la selección de superintendentes que he estado en dos elecciones. Y ellos prometen cambios, están emocionados de venir a trabajar, pero llegan, conocen nuestra mesa directiva y todo se viene abajo.
I feel like it's totally a joke. I've been a part of the committee to select two superintendents, but I feel like as soon as they come here, they get to know and meet the board members and everything changed. They come really excited here, but all of a sudden everything changed.
Mis hijos tienen un estatus mezclado. Tengo un hijo que no, que no tenía esperanzas de ir a la universidad porque ni siquiera pudo recibir DACA. Y gracias al programa de Inspire, él pudo tener esa, esas oportunidades, ese dinero para poder ir al colegio. Que yo no sé qué va a pasar con mi, mi siguiente hijo que está en el once porque todas las decisiones que ustedes están tomando le van a afectar a él.
My kids, some of them, they have a legal stat, status. And my son, he didn't qualify for DACA. And thanks to the Inspire program, he was able to attend school and my concern, or college, my concern is for the 11th grade. What is going to happen if you guys take away Inspire program? What's going to happen with him and other students?
Y otra preocupación también es la falta de director en, en Adam City High School. Y igual yo apoyo porque cuando ustedes están viendo que el señor Thompson estaba haciendo un buen trabajo y él lo ha venido haciendo desde que llegó al Esther Arnold, él le dio un cambio a esa escuela. Fue como una luz que vieron los estudiantes pues una de mis hijas mayores se graduó ahí gracias al apoyo y al, a lo que trajeron él y el señor Guardiola.
And my other concern is the lack of a principal or established principal at the high school. We could see that Mr. Thompson was making a good changes over there. Thanks to him, my daughter was able to graduate in all the programs that he was able to implement. And Mr. Guardiola.
Y mi petición es esta, yo quiero que ustedes vuelvan a tener el programa de Inspire durante los años siguientes porque yo no quiero que mi hijo se quede afuera de estas oportunidades. Y igual el director de deportes, si ustedes toman esa decisión de quitar el director de deportes, también lo afectan a él.
And my request is that you guys keep Inspire program for future students and for my son and as well to keep the athletic director because my son will be affected if you guys remove him.
Yo quiero, exijo como padre de este distrito claridad en sus decisiones de la mesa directiva y exijo que también nos tomen en cuenta los padres cuando ustedes están tomando estas decisiones.
I demand as a parent that you guys have more transparency when you are making decisions. And that you guys, and you guys consider and they be present when you make decisions.
Y esto lo digo porque recientemente tuve una reunión con el superintendente para preguntarle acerca de su programa que él va a traer de la compañía que contrató. Y entendí que eso va a beneficiar algunos niños en el nueve grado, pero mi hijo del once, ¿dónde va a quedar? Entonces, ni él me sabe dar respuestas acerca de lo que va a pasar con estos programas.
Recently, I met with the superintendent and I talked to him. He explained to me the new program that he's planning to bring on. But he explained to me that it was only for students in ninth grade. Of course, my son doesn't not qualify and he was not so clear about that, how that program can cover my son.
Gracias.
Rene Vasquez.
Her name is Reyna Soria Vasquez.
Hola, muy buenas tardes, miembros del comité. Mi nombre es Reyna Soria Vasquez. Mi dirección es 7191 Pontiac Street. Y tengo cuatro hijos, tres niños y una niña. Todos ellos cursan aquí en Adam City High School desde el principio hasta el final.
Good afternoon. My name is Reyna Soria and I'm going to read what she has here, so it's going to be a lot easier. My name is Reyna Soria and I have four kids. And all of them, they've been going through Adams 14 School District.
Y estoy aquí precisamente por eso como padre de familia y miembro de la comunidad ya que he residido aquí en Commerce City desde hace aproximadamente casi 20 años. Entonces estoy un poco confundida y me gustaría saber una aclaración de el por qué no quedó la directora que fue elegida en Adam City High School.
I've been, I, as a community member and as a parent living here for more than 20 years in this district or in this community, I have a concern and a question. I would like to ask you, why the principal who was selected was not able to take the position?
Ya que yo fui parte de selección como les digo y he escuchado comentarios de que por parte de ustedes no fue aceptada, entonces quisiera clarificar, ya que no, no me gusta asumir sino que me gustaría escuchar de ustedes si es verdad o son simplemente rumores.
And I was part of the selection, the committee, the selector. And I, I, I'm here because I don't want to assume anything, but I want answers from you guys about why was not selected. I understand that you guys dropped that selection and I want to hear from you.
Otra, otra de mis preocupaciones es este también saber el por qué están quitando programas, programas tan buenos que me consta a mí que han dado resultados, ya que como les digo, tengo mis niños desde kinder hasta el final. Entonces he visto los cambios, he visto que esos programas sí funcionan. Y me refiero específicamente al de Inspira.
And I would like to know why you guys are trying to remove such a wonderful programs like Inspire. Like I told you before, I have my kids since kindergarten all the way through high school and I am witness that those programs really work for kids.
Y pues este, esto me lleva a mí a reflexionar y me gustaría que con mucho respeto que todos y cada uno de ustedes se autoevaluaran conscientemente, concientizaran. Ya que hace exactamente como cinco años que vienen cambiando superintendentes, quitan directores, maestros y programas que de verdad son buenos.
And at this point, I've been reflecting and I would like you guys to do a self-evaluation and think about this. In five years, we have been transferring administrators, principals of the high school.
Por lo cual esto me lleva a mí como madre de familia y como miembro de la comunidad a reflexionar en que quizás ahí no esté el problema, porque ya son cinco años que vienen siendo esos cambios. Entonces lo que yo quiero pedir es eso, que se autoevalúen simplemente pensando en nuestros niños, nuestro futuro. Muchas gracias y que pasen muy buenas noches.
And I think that the, the problem is not at the high school. That's why I'm asking you guys to auto-reflect and maybe the problem is somewhere else. And this is about the kids and for the future. Thank you so much.
Guillermo Serna.
Guillermo Serna, 14122, East 100 and second place, Commerce City, Colorado. What I have to say is that everything that's here, and I applaud everybody that's here and all the kids that are presenting and all the parents that are participating on their concerns. But I want them to know a little bit of history. That this district was hit by a bomb of discrimination. And it wasn't five years ago. It was almost 12 years ago through five superintendents. Each time a superintendent changes, so does curriculum, so do ideas. Majority of you were here. Majority of you participated. We bring the chair. The chair, a person that has participated with our kids. And how many kids in math, in teaching participation in civics and other things with scholarships for kids? A person that has a park named after him. Yes, you can participate, but be respectful of what all of you have accomplished here tonight. You, some of you, nobody wanted to run for this position at one time. I understand that. And a couple of you did because you care. We all do. But you don't change things in five years or six years. It takes decades. When I first started to participate here, we had a 32% graduation. We brought it up to about 50. Now it's a little bit higher. We're making progress. But what I want people to understand is that you represent us. Teachers, administrators, teachers have a union to represent them and bring out their issues. Administrators have contracts and those contracts, they understand. These are the processes that we have to teach. Parents are the children's representation. We can listen to these kids and they're telling you how they're hurting. Okay? They're hurting because they want more. But the State Department is not helping us. The Civil Rights gave a report as to what should be happening. And I have watched you work hard to try and do that by bringing in. It took eight years to destroy this district. It's not gonna be happening in two years. So what I'm saying is, I want parents to participate more so that they can give you their issues. Out of the, what I watched from across the street, out of the maybe half the building at the high school, how many kids were out here? By the time they got here...
Can you wrap it up, Mr. Serna?
By the time they got, they wrapped, okay, give me a second. By the time they got here, you had maybe 90, 100 kids. Where did the other 200 and some go? They were out in the street. The kids have got to understand is that by helping this district is by staying in the classroom and learning, because we're spending money on all of this. Every hour that they miss is every opportunity that they miss for going to college and having a good future. Thank you.
Giedmo, Giedmo, forgot something.
Get excited.
Okay, that brings an end to audience comments. If students have to leave, let's do so now, please, so don't interrupt the rest of the agenda.
Monica, do you got any more packets? Ain't nothing over there. Yeah.
Okay, moving on to superintendent's report. Dr. Abrego.
Yes, we have various reports. The first one's gonna be from Dr. Marcela Pata, who's going to give us information on the survey findings. You pass these down?
Want him to pass those out.
Good evening. Buenas tardes, buenas noches. My name is Dr. Marcela Pata, and I am, should I wait? Should I start?
Governing Board President, may I ask Dr. Pata how long you think your presentation may take? Okay, and I'm just gonna ask Mr. Rola, we also have two schools that do presentations that they should last about five minutes, and I'm just thinking in the sake of our students, would you mind if we tried to change the order around so that our students...
Fine with me.
Dr. Pata, would that be acceptable?
Okay.
Yeah, so our students can get to classes. So... So we modified a little bit, so instead of Dr. Pata, we're gonna move her to the end, we're gonna have Dupont Elementary.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to go first, only because I, just like the students have to get home and get ready for the next day of school. President Rola, distinguished board members, Dr. Abrego, and the Adams 14 community, my name is Pat Almeida, and I'm the principal of Dupont Elementary School. Thank you for this opportunity to come forward this evening to share some of the highlights of the 2016-2017 school year. A lot of what drives our work is our mission statement. We are united as a community and fostering a creative, challenging, and caring environment that values diverse backgrounds and truly empowers students to achieve their maximum academic and social potential as lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and expressive individuals. Currently, Dupont Elementary School looks a little bit like this. It changes depending on the number of students that kind of come and go in our community, but we're at 609 students, K through 5. We have 38 certified employees, we have 21 classified employees, one site-based therapist, and two administrators normally. Right now, I'm holding down the fort, but we have a new assistant principal hired for next year, so I feel like we're gonna be in great shape next year. What drives our work? When people who are not in schools think about, think about the reasons that we do what we do, we often, we always return to our Unified Improvement Plan, and for Dupont, for the Dupont community, we have decided that standards and instructional planning is critical to making sure that our students have a rigorous curriculum. We also realize the importance of best first-time instruction to engage students cognitively and ensure that our students are learning to mastery. We also know that our students need the benefit of wraparound services through multi-tiered systems of support. So I'll talk to you quite a bit in depth about each one of these pieces and what it looks like at Dupont. So we are a community, and you'll see pictures there of pieces of the day that make us a community. So we are a community of learners. We teach our students empathy through student council. Currently, our student council is working on Give Hope a Chance campaign. Students across the school are gathering their pennies, their nickels, and their dimes, and at the end of April, our student council will present the money that has been earned to our Hope Center, which is downstairs and supports our students who are in need of additional services in the form of housing, busing, food, clothing. We want our students to understand the importance of giving back to their community. As of the first week, I think our student council had already counted that we have $400 to give to the Hope Center, so I'm extremely proud of that. We teach our students enrichment through our after-school programs. We teach our students collaboration by working with other students in other grade levels through reading buddies. We teach our students to persevere in the face of difficulty through our Read Act plans that define our targeted instruction and our tutoring after school. We teach our students to be biliterate. Currently, we have kindergarten, first, and second grade classrooms, and we are proud to announce that we will be adding third grade next year. We teach our students that to be challenged is okay, and that competition through the geography bee and destination imagination gives them a hint of what they are going to be expected to do in their future. We teach them to close the gap in their own learning through intervention and see our success. We also teach them that interdisciplinary connections through movement and content together through Celebrate the Beat give them a means for using their multi-senses. This year, the greatest, I would say probably the greatest highlight of this year is our Connect for Success Grant, because it has driven so much of the work that we have done. When I came before you last year at this time, we were in the process of developing a two-year plan. We were approved, we received $80,000 last year, we will receive $80,000 for this coming year to fund all of the work that we're currently doing at Dupont. As a part of the Connect for Success Grant, my leadership team was required to go visit a high-achieving school. We chose Soaring Eagles in Colorado Springs because it has a similar, it has somewhat of a similar demographic to Adams 14, and their students are scoring 98% proficient on the state tests. And the, a couple of things really stood out, a couple of ideals, and the first one is the flooding model of instruction. Across every grade level, students are, teachers use the data to look at bands of instruction for students, so in a traditional system, you're looking at heterogeneous groups or mixed groups of ability levels in each classroom, and the teacher is required to plan for a wide range of abilities. In the flooding model of instruction, our teachers look at data and develop bands of instruction across the grade level. So the, there isn't the huge variety of talents and abilities in one grade, or in one classroom. What you will see is that teachers are able to tailor their instruction to a smaller band of, smaller band of students, and I'll share some of the data with that in a minute or so. We are also... It's not moving. Well, I don't know, Monica. Did it get stuck? I can... Would you like me just to go on? I'll just go ahead and go on. So we are also a community of volunteers, a part of providing wraparound services for students, is that you look at volunteers within your staff and within your community, and so we develop networks of parents and teachers through our parent-teacher home visits. We've looked at future leadership through Young Ameritown. We've developed a partnership with the community through Junior Achievement. We have parent-teacher teams, and you'll see that in action tomorrow night at our Family Literacy Night. We have shared decision-making with our parents through My Breakfast with the Principal and our Back Teams. The greatest achievement that we have witnessed this year is our STOMP group, which is our support team of motivated parents. Our STOMP team is a group of 17 of our community moms that have come together. They are learning how to provide services, not just to students in school but to their own students at home. They have committed 200 hours of volunteer work to Dupont Elementary School. They service our students Monday through Thursday in small groups of 30 minutes, and then on Fridays, they come together to receive professional development and lesson planning for the next week. It has been an opportunity for us to engage our parents at a high level and to see the tremendous amount of knowledge and commitment and ability that is in our community. So as a result of this, we have become a community that's driven by data. Through the Driven by Data process, we have weekly data team meetings, we have monthly action planning, which, in which our teachers work together as teams to come up with the next instruction, instruction for the next instructional cycle. We have also started a state of the grade level address, so on a weekly basis, each grade level, not each grade level every week, but one grade level per week has been presenting the highlights of this year with their data. There's classroom observations and coaching, we have focused professional development, and as a result of our volunteer efforts, we now have two multi-tiered system of support teams that service our kindergarten through second and then our third through fifth grade students, and these are made up of all teachers that are giving of their time outside of the contract day. We use many, many assessments, as you'll see below, to make decisions, to make instructional decisions, that will continue to drive what we do. I'd like to share just a little bit of the data, I won't take up much time. So with this flooding model of instruction, I'm going to share with you the benchmark data. In second grade, 25 students have seen an increase as of the February benchmark window of 121 scale score points, and an increase of the percentile rank from 59 to 69. In third grade, 19 students have seen an increase of 84 points in the scale score points, and an increase from 57 to 64 percentile rank. In fourth grade, 30 students, which is about a third of our fourth grade, have seen an average increase of 127 scale score points and a percentile rank increase from 59 to 72. In fifth grade, 28 students, which is about a third of our fifth grade, have seen an increase of 139 scale score points and a percentile rank increase from 51 to 61. We know that our students who are above the 50th percentile have a greater chance of being proficient on our state tests, and so we're very proud of the results of our flooding model. There are still areas in which that we need to work, but that's what next year is for, and that's what our leadership team will be planning this summer. All of this makes us a community, that makes Dupont Elementary School a great place to learn and work hard. Seattle's Best Coffee recognizes all those who give their best. So do you remember a couple of weeks ago, I said I would bring that video in to show you? So this is the video that Seattle's Best Coffee, the Integer Group Advertising Group, developed, and it is in recognition of all educators and all those that dedicate their time and their efforts to students in the community. So I'd like to share with you that Sarah Van Alken is a second-grade teacher at Dupont Elementary School, and she, because of the efforts that she has shown people, her family, her friends, this video is a result of that. Well, I think maybe that, that you will have the opportunity, I can provide you, that's, that is the link, and I would highly encourage you to go home tonight and watch this, because it will give you a reason for coming back. So thank you for your support. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. If it's all right with all of you, I will send you the link tomorrow in an email. Is that okay?
I'll send it to them.
Perfect, thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have another superintendent report. That will be about Adult Basic Education, the conference they attended.
The world of technology is changing, right? Before, I used to have a yellow pad, and now I'm upgraded to an iPad, so that's a start. Good evening, President Rola, members of the board, Superintendent Abrego. At the beginning of April, myself and a team of instructional staff had the opportunity to attend the COEAB Conference, which is the Coalition for Adult Basic Education. This conference was held in Orlando, Florida, and it brought together over 2,200 conference attendees from Acosta country to share best practices in the field of adult education. Tonight's presentation includes my biggest takeaway from the conference, as well as our AB instructors, Ms. Sherry Romero. Two of the teachers will be participating via video as well. Two of them are actually at the high school enrolling new students for our summer sessions, so they were unable to be here tonight. So we'll go ahead and get started. So for me, the biggest takeaway was I was able to attend a leadership workshop, and it was a half-day conference that really focused on looking at how you manage a team and how you lead a team. And I think for me, one of the things that I took away was, we're so inundated with trying to always manage what's going on in our program without looking at the system itself or the program itself. So for me, what I want to come back to, starting in the fall, is to really redevelop our program and think about how is the program set up, so that way, the program can run itself and the people will be managed by what's, how the system is built, and me as the leader of the program will be able to lead the team into new ways of, you know, instructing or bringing in new ideas for our program. So that was really helpful in... So that was really helpful in um, you know, for me to be able to attend something like that as I grow in, in my professional career. The other thing was looking at the world of technology um, for twenty-first century learning. So there's a new software out there called Burlington English Software, which it really helps adults engage in learning English uh, outside of the classroom. So we're really looking at how do we bring together technology like an iPad, a smartphone, so they can access activities where they can continue the learning of English outside of the ESL classrooms. And then the last thing was the ability to benefit. So in K through twelve, there's the, you know, possibility of students being able to concurrently enroll and start taking college credit. Um, so recently, there was legislation passed to allow adult students to do the same. So now we're looking at ways to partner with community colleges to co-enroll our adult students into higher education institutions, so they can start working towards their higher education degree simultaneously. So it's not first you get your high school credential diploma, then you go to college, but we're looking at ways to simultaneously enroll them. So we'll go ahead and have Ms. Sherry Romero present.
Thank you for the opportunity to attend the national conference. Um, my biggest takeaway was um, learning the need to mentor students that are struggling with poverty. There are many skillsets that I might assume um, students have and I don't know that until I get to know the students. So a personal, lengthy, thorough intake process is what is recommended, that you get to know your students as they um, go through your enrollment and test-taking period. And um, I'm trying to um, implement something for the fall program. I'm working on a questionnaire, something that we can use throughout the, the school and um, get to know our students before they enter our classroom, so that we can target um, the skillsets they need. Thank you.
So we'll bring in the videos, we'll, there was two other instructors that attended the conference, so we'll watch their presentation via video. Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think in the event, since we don't have that, um, the file is pretty big to, to send via email. So what we could look at is possibly, you know, giving you a flash drive or, you know, maybe if there's a meeting, we can share out at, at a meeting at another time, since there's not audio. But uh, I just want to thank you for having the opportunity to attend the conference. I think one of the biggest concerns that we have in the field of adult education is really looking at those professional development opportunities that exist here in Colorado. And because, you know, they are limited, sometimes we do have to go out of state. So I do appreciate you all approving us to travel uh, and attend this to get, you know, better equipped with skills, so we can better support our adult students in this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. How do you reach the parents?
How do we reach the parents? So currently, we have, you know, information posted on our website, so under departments, uh, on the adult education or on the uh, Addams Fourteen website, there's an adult education page. Uh, every semester, I update the uh, webpage with the new summer or fall brochure with upcoming classes. We send out a rotary call uh, right before registration to get um, information out to parents. And it goes out to all Addams Fourteen parents within the district. Uh, and then we also have flyers posted around the community. So we're trying to get out more into businesses to pu- you know, put up flyers out about our program to try to highlight uh, more marketing. But that is something that we definitely want to improve on, because we know that, you know, we sometimes rely on word of mouth. But I think in order to go into new communities, we need to continue to market in those areas.
And what is the number as far as um, how many parents do you have in these programs?
So right now, um, before summer session starts, we're at roughly two hundred and eighty students that we've served this year. Um, I'm hoping that we'll recruit about another hundred and twenty individuals for the summer session, which will put us at roughly three ninety for the year, and that's what our target was for the, um, this fiscal year.
That's good, thank you.
Absolutely. Also, we have graduation coming up before I end. We do have graduation coming up. We have uh, seven graduates or eight graduates so far. We're hoping to finish another four or five before graduation on June fifteenth. I will be getting out an invitation to all of you. Uh, we're hoping to hold it here in the Board of Education room or in the community room. Uh, and then possibly doing a um, reception um, at, in the park, maybe providing some, some uh, barbecue for the students after we uh, finish graduation, so that will be coming soon.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I just want to thank you, because this was my department when I worked. And I know these teachers and, and staff. I knew Chris when he was a teacher.
That's right.
And Sherry, I knew a long time, and Mr. Perea.
Mr. Pice.
Pice, sorry. You know, and I, they do a great job with the adults. They work hard. I know that firsthand, you know, and I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
That the program is still going.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
And now we'll get back to uh, our original when we have Dr. Parra.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Marcela Parra and I work for the Region Four Western Equity Assistance Center. When we started the survey and working with the school, we were Region Eight Equity Assistance Center. We have since been reorganized at the federal level. They, we went from ten regions to four, so we have all of the southwest, southwestern United States. So that includes thirteen continental US states, the Hawaii, Alaska, Guam, American Samoa, and common northern Mariana Islands. So we increased our small region from six to sixteen, so by ten. Anyways, I'm finally very happy to present the report to you, which I hope you have in front of you. As you well know, I've been up in front of the board a couple of times already and so, and I recognize some of you. Um, this is, this was a very long project. Um, the district contacted the center a year after the grievance was filed. It took us a year to come to terms with OCR and the, and the district to re- I developed the survey and then in that year, we reviewed it several times and it was vetted through the district. It was vetted at the leadership level, was vetted through OCR, and then we finally were able to implement it a year after that. So it took us two years to develop and implement the whole district. Yes, sir.
Can, can you give us the years when you started? So I'm just trying to figure out the years.
Timeline?
Yes, please.
I believe it's in the report, but I think the original grievance was filed on, in twenty-ten? Or maybe twenty-eleven? And so it was a little bit eh, more than a year that we got contact, I think probably two years. We initially contacted the district, cause OCR uh, told us about the situation, so we reached out first. And then a year later, they contacted us, so it took a while. And then um, when we finally got, we had to develop the survey. We had to align it to the needs of the OCR um, agreement to resolve letter and, and resolution. So I, I had to study that and develop the survey, make sure it addressed all the areas, which included race, gender, and national origin. And it was basically discrimination on, against national origin, being Hispanic students, families, and teachers. So from there, we developed appropriate surveys for eh, we had originally agreed, third grade through ca- to, through twelfth grade and then the parents, the staff, the teachers, the administrators. And then when I started administering the, the survey, um, OCR and the, and the previous leadership, I think it was um, Walt Kramer's decided that we were going to also um, survey kinder through second grade, which in my professional opinion shouldn't have been ha- shouldn't have happened, because it was too abstract. They weren't part of the situation. They had just started, so, and, and it was a difficult thing. But we adjusted and we actually got it done, like the day that they requested it, we were able to go back. We were at Hanson Elementary and they cooperated fully. So we went and I adjusted it and luckily it was online, so I, I was able to do it. And we just um, we read it to them, we explained it to them, we talked about feelings, so we kind of put it down to grade level language and then had them pick the, the, the the answer they wanted per question throughout the survey. So that's what we did. That's how we adjusted for that. So it took a while to get to this, to that point that I just described, and it took another year to actually finish it. We initially started right away with the seniors that had graduated that year before we started um, in fall of, I believe it was twenty-fourteen. So we wanted to get the seniors who had those lived experiences. So we mailed them the survey to their addresses, along to the parents, as well as the classified. The issue with mailing the, the surveys, the hard copy surveys to the parents and the seniors was, we got one back from a graduating senior of that year. And then the rest were returned, well, we got none back from the rest of the seniors that graduated. The parents, we had a lot of issues with, because they were getting returned, we could, because incorrect addresses, which I know has since been addressed, but we, we did have to um, adjust for that as well. So then we, we adjusted by, I went personally before the year's end to the parent teacher conferences in the evenings and uploaded the surveys in English and Spanish at all the schools and would, was trying to like bribe the, the parents to come in and take it. So we got some. I think we got a total of thirty-some, two hundred and thirty-some stu- um, parents to take the survey. You know, so we could have gotten more and, and that was our goal, but we just couldn't figure out how to really reach out to them and, and motivate them to participate in the survey, besides handcuffing them to a desk. You know, we don't want to do that. So um, then we went through the schools and we started with elementaries and middle school, high school. We did um, Lester Arnold. Um, they have the night ship, the night track, the morning crack, track, the afternoon track. And then we tried to get the, the online track. And, and so we pretty much covered all of that. We went to Adam City, we did the two middle schools and all of the elementary schools. The original um, report didn't require all of the schools. I think it was just um, nine schools, but we ended up doing everybody. So that was a little background on that. And here are the results. They're very condensed. I had a presentation of like eighty slides, but it was just too much. They said, no, half an hour. I said, okay, wow. I'll listen. I, I, I defer to Dr. Brago's uh, mandate there. Yes, sir.
Well, I, I have a question.
Of course.
If you made eighty slides, and before I came, I think I looked at about twenty-something, close to thirty you had? Can we get the eighty slides too?
Yes, I can email those to the, to Monica.
Was it the online link?
I don't know what online link.
The link that you had sent me with the whole report?
Did I send it or did chat?
Um, chat, I think.
I don't know what that link is to. Oh, the drop-off. It might be that, yes, yes. Uh, let me review it before I leave and then I'll tell you. If you want, and then you can just send it to them, cause it might be the drop-off. But yeah, you can get that. But everything that you need is in that report as well in front of you.
Thank you.
So with no further delay, we are proud to present the final results of the surveys of the school climate and workplace environment survey findings. So this is just a very condensed version. Um, we total uh, surveys administered was six thousand six hundred and ninety-three. And that's who we surveyed, the number. So K twelve was five thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, and I think uh, administrators, staff, and everything totaled six hundred and ninety-four respondents. So the next one. So these were the overall key findings. Bullying is a major issue at every level. We're talking students, peer-to-peer, same-sex bullying, um, um, national origin bullying, racial bullying, and there's also bullying among your staff. There's also bullying among administrators. There, it's just like, i- it's part of the culture, it seems, of the school. The, the, of the district. And, but let me just say, that this survey, you know, w- does not reflect this leadership, its previous leadership. So I do, I do want to make that point, that, you know, when it says the district and the leadership or the superintendent, it refers to the previous one. And that's noted in the sur- in the survey report as well. Um, there are still a lot of K twelve students, uh, Spanish-speaking students who are being told not to speak Spanish, and that was a big issue in the OCR report. So that's something that we need to rectify or look into and, and investigate maybe further at each school site, why that's happening. Um, I think a lot of teachers have the misconception by telling our students, um, you need to speak English to learn English. That's not necessarily true. The, all research goes that a bilingual learner is strongest learner in their native language, and then they can transfer into their second language. So. Parents also report that school environments are a challenge for their students, especially those students who speak Spanish again. Spanish-speaking classified techno- technical and staff report many instances of harassment still in the workplace because of race, culture, or language. But also classified tech and staff who identified as white, who self-identified as white, we've, report that they are also harassed and manipulated because of their race and for being an English-only speaker. So we're seeing that. There's a lot of there, I think we, what, what I saw in the re- the data was, they felt marginalized. And then also teachers report that bullying is a major concern. Um, teachers who, again, who self-identified as white feel a lack of support from the district. And, and then administrators, and this is just an overview of all of it, and it's listed in your executive summary. So administrators in general, as a whole, are concerned about the prevalence of student bullying. They also reported that many times they are uncomfortable working with non-English language learners, because they don't speak their language, or the language barriers. Um, administers, administrators also report fear of retaliation, and that was kind of embedded throughout the, the survey when it came to um, upper management or teachers or classified. Everybody had some sort of fear of retaliation.
But again, this is all from the previous administration.
Yes. Mm-hmm. So we're gonna go kinder through twelfth grade, the recommendations. Got a question?
Oh, no.
Okay. So that was just a snapshot of an overview of the recor- of the findings. This is the recommendations. Oveas bullying training, Oveas bullying prevention training and program is a program that we recommend, that we could provide the services for you. We do it for free. It's actually one of the best in the nation, and some would say the world, cause it's global. But um, we can provide that training for you. Um, the next recommendation is you should provide training and education for students on how to treat their peers. I think there's been like PBIS or character counts, um, programs already initiated. So a lot of these probably already being addressed, but this is just what we found from the report. The third one there is the students reported they felt unsafe at school. So I think we the, provide information on how students can report any negative aspects or experiences to their administrators to make them feel safer, whether it deals with bullying, whether it deals with, you know, somebody saying mean to them, being nasty to them, or maybe just unsafe, feeling unsafe in the building itself. So we recommend that you should disseminate information, and it should be ongoing and it should be used to facilitate a welcoming and high-quality education environment for all students, no matter what their first language is. And this is K twelve. Uh, K two, I mean. So third through fifth grade, we recommend you provide reach, respecting ethnic and cultural heritage training, which there's gonna be a training coming up in Fort Collins in June, I think. And I know that Dr. Patterson is getting her certification in that as well, so we can work with her to provide that training, cause we're trained in that as well. Um, increase your safety measures at school, against they weren't feeling safe at the, at their school site. Um, more attention to the cleanliness of the school campus. That was a thread K twelve that we heard. Again, provide Oveas bullying prevention training, that's third through fifth grade recommendations. Professional development and technical assistance on how to avoid targeting diverse students in the area of discipline. That's a na- that's a growing trend that the data for this survey showed, but it's also a national trend. So the feds are really looking at that. It's called the school-prison pipeline, cause they believe that if somebody is constantly referred in going to the, to the office and missing seat time in their classroom, then it automatically translates to them not wanting to go to school, and they drop out, or they feel pushed out, and then they get in trouble in the community, and then they end up where? In prison. So data shows that the two largest minority groups are African-American males, African-American females. And the third growing one is um, make, uh, he- Hispanic male. So that's one thing that we want, we want to try to avoid as much as possible. And then show students how to value and respect all students. I think character counts and PBIS. And once we do reach, if you choose to take that, we'll help address that as well. Thank you. So these are just some comments that came directly from the survey. And I'll leave them up there so you can read. Um the two that I I've struggled with putting there was the one, two, three, the fourth one down. My social studies teacher looks, checks out girls a lot like me and other girls. That was dated by a seventh-grade female. The next one is I have been made fun of because of who I am, who my family is, what I do, and I have been pushed, and the teacher does nothing. And that was commented by a sixth-grade female Spanish survey respondent. The reason why I chose to put that in there was because there is a national growing trend again uh with adult sexual predators in school. So, just be aware that s- some female students are being felt, are being made uncomfortable. And it might be intentional, it might not be intentional, but that's something you can address, and we can also provide adult sexual predator. Um prevention training for you as well in that. So. Also, recommendations. Providing reach would address the first one. Um the second one is very important because that addresses Title Nine, it addresses Title Six, it addresses the discipline. There does not seem to be a clear and set process on how to report any form of harassment, whether it's sexual harassment, which falls under Title Nine. Whether it's race or national origin with falls falls under Title Six. And then you'll have an ELL being told to speak English as a national origin issue, so that's under race as well. So, there is no clear set process for anybody to follow to like, all right, here's a form, I can fill it out. I put it in this box, or I can email so-and-so. There's nothing like that. So, I would recommend that you review your student handbooks and you address it in your student handbooks, and also in your parent handbooks as well as your employee handbooks. And once that's set, then you're there. Um again, review your school data to reveal emerging trends and disaport- disproportionate student referrals. Oveas anti-bullying prevention and provide training on the prevention of cyberbullying. That was another big gr- trend in your data as well. There's a lot of cyberbullying going on. It's not unique to Adams twelve. It's a national problem, but there are programs out there to be done. But when you educate a student in bullying, then they realize that cyberbullying is also part of that. They think they're just teasing or. That they're not gonna get caught or that it's gonna go away if they delete it, but it's out there forever, and that's what they don't understand. So, educating our students on that better is another area. So, this is the parent climate survey findings. You had a hundred and thirty-two Hispanic or Latino self-identified, three American Indian, Alaska Native, one Asian, two African-American, thirty-five white. Four that identified as two or more races and a total of three hundred and seventy-five student parents. So, this was the breakdown on the legal legal status of defining a parent. Legal guardian, mother, father, grandparent, other, because we didn't want to just, the nuclear family has changed. So, our our communities have different types of parents, or they live with grandparents in the Hispanic community. That's not uncommon. Or to live with your tia or tia, or have a niece or nephew living with you, so. The the results, we recommend that mandatory training be established for high standards for all students. The parents felt that the ha- there there was not enough rigor in the lessons or in the curriculum. And I think some of that was shared tonight as well by the students here. Um to increase the presence of adults um throughout school buildings. And the first one was geared specifically towards Spanish-speaking students. Um ESL is unfortunately a term that people tend to misconstrue and think that. Because you can't speak English, that you're not cognitively advanced, but language abilities have nothing to do with your cognitive academic. Um abilities, so just keep that in mind. Anything that you offer for your English-speaking students. By equity standards and by Title Nine and Title Six and La vie Nichols. Should also be um offered to your English language learners as well. Increase the presence of adults throughout schools. Again, safety factor there. Um offer training for parents on proper steps to take if they believe their children have been harassed. Again, there's no set um process at the time when the survey was taken. So, we can work on helping develop that and make it stronger. Um provide student training sessions on resources on accepting diverse cultures. Again, reach will help with that. Provide opportunities for parents to report any harassment through a clear and re- and an anonymous process. Um provide outreach sessions to parents on community support services. Some of that I witnessed that was done when I would come to school, um but it it probably was not addressing the parents' needs, so. But maybe a survey, a needs assessment survey for them could be developed. We could also help with that. Um provide trainings for office staff, administrators and others on how to properly welcome parents into the school. That was a big one. Um and I've s- I've seen it across many schools, uh this district as well, where you walk in and you just. Nobody looks up to say hello, and that's a big cultural thing too as well. You you you, we are, I'm Mexican, I'm Hispanic, so I know you have to walk into a place and say hello. And acknowledge your elders and whoever's there, and and that's what we're used to. So, I can say from experience that that's probably not, that's not happening if they're complaining about that, among other things, but. Simple things like that really help a lot. Again, Oveas bullying prevention training. So, classified and tech staff survey results. A hundred and nineteen Latinos, total of two hundred and fifty, took the the survey. We did mail it out to them. We didn't get many back. We got a low response rate. So, then again, I worked with the district to work with the supervisor, provide a time where everybody could stop. Because they were main- it, you know, maintenance is constantly going and classified and all that, and they have different times they come in. So, I was able to find a time throughout the the year to meet with everybody in the different departments within the those three classifications. To go and personally give them a hard copy and and collect them when they're done, so we got a good turnout, I think. So, this was um comments that was put up, that was shared by your CTS. One addressed the Board of Education. Um that it has created a hostile work envi- environment for the employees that work at ESS. They're talking about how much they make, stating that we make so much money, we could eat steak dinners every night. They are uneducated about school law and have ha- alienated a huge portion of the staff. People choose to work here. They come here to work, yet are treated as if they have no right to be here, and that was by a white staff member. Much improvement has happened in the past three years. They need to continue the effort, Hispanic and Hispanic staff member. Some discrimination still exists. Solution to concerns not addressed in a timely manner by another Hispanic fa- family member. I understand that we all want to have a voice about confrontation, but it was, when it was said that everyone speak up. It made coming to work very impersonal at time. People slash coworkers now think they do basically whatever they want. Because all they have to do, staff, coworkers. In the workplace, everyone is turning on each other, and in parentheses, staffing coworkers. These select few have taken the pure joy of coming to work. We can't address issues without drivers wanting to file complaints and concerns and telling how to do. Telling how to do the job to better serve students, and that was by a Hispanic staff member. And then the last one, which I think is very prevalent, there was a trend of the white staff members feeling marginalized. And this one um I think said it very well. The only people I have seen harassed by. For not speaking perfect English and having an accent are the Spanish-speaking students. They have made fun of the way I pronounce the words, no one else. This is really strange strange because they are the ones complaining about being harassed in most cases. So, that wasn't the quote I thought it was, sorry. But that's a good observation by that person. Any questions so far? So, the CTS would like to have the administrators have a clear reporting for staff if they feel inequitable treatment. Is not taking place in the classroom um or their workplace. Provide increased attention to school cle- cleanliness, um provide training on how to report school safety, issues on campus. Provide hostile environment prevention training, um provide training on working with other cultures in the workplace. And provide training on the prevention of harassment in the workplace. Teacher climate survey findings. This is the number that we got, that we sent the survey out to the teachers via email. So, I think you have more than seventy. That number that's reflected there of teachers in your district, right? So, I don't think the the turnout was very high. The highest was the elementary. These are all female elementary, middle and high school teachers, and they all basically say they feel harassed on a daily basis. For twenty-five years, they have endured discrimination. It's prevalent under our current superintendent, meaning the previous now, not this one. Um Hispanic teachers have still filed grievances through the teachers' union because of discrimination and negative evaluations. I know of teachers who have still been discriminated against even in spite of the OCR findings. The district actually has a problem with employees who do not speak Spanish. Also, there's talk about acceptance of diversity and cultural differences. There's also an extreme existence to carrying it out. Also, there's a large level distrust due to the district's small size and history of getting rid of employees. Who may hold a different view or bring a skill set that is different from prior prior ideals. I feel harassed on a daily basis, and most of the discomfort comes from gossip by administration in public places. Where personal business can be heard by other staff member, parents and students. That was a female high school teacher. The next one. So, provide training and prevention of the of harassment in the workplace. Title Nine training is the key here. Because that that is really addresses everything, whether it's peer-to-peer, same-sex, male-female harassment, gossip. Even ignoring each other in the hallway, it's all some sort of level of harassment. The other one that I should have included um is training on FERPA and ADA. Uh districts seem to forget that, but FERPA is what gets a lot of people in trouble, so teacher lounges are like. The nucleus of of school district gossip and and. Casual conversations about, you know, confidential information about each other and our students. So, just, you know, addressing that in the school district policy handbooks for teachers and employees would be a good place to start. Um providing training for administrators on the prevention of retaliation in consequences of any retaliation, Title Nine training. We actually have a a webinar that we're putting together that we could probably, I was talking with Dr. Patterson, we could probably pilot with the district. So, we're gonna pilot here, we're gonna pilot with a school district in Alaska as well. So, we have that already going, and you could have that every new employee go through it. And then have the present employees do a review every two years to keep it fresh and and they in a a requirement type of thing. Also, provide training in how to effectively engage parents of students of color or from diverse backgrounds. And then provide training in how to report a complaint. That could also be that part of your Title Nine training. But most importantly, just let them know how, where and who to file a complaint with. So, like, who's your Title Nine director? Oh, you guys got homework?
You're the Title Nine director.
Okay, good. So, all your teachers, staff and employees should know who that is, and and the uh leadership needs to work with. Linda to get that process in place and make that known to your school employees, to the whole district. Um provide resources to recruit teachers and administrators of color. And provide Oveas bullying prevention training on all campuses, because bull- student bullying was a concern for all teachers that answered the survey. So, administrator survey findings. Fifteen Latinos, one American Indian, one African-American, nineteen white. And four identified as two as more racist, for a total of forty. I think this was the full. The only one that we got, everybody. Pro- provide training on engaging families with the school to support academics. Um provide trainings on administrative expectations of teachers. So, that could be done with like JESSA, generating expectations for student achievement, which we can provide. I'm not trying to sell this the the center, but we do all these services for free, and we can work with your district, and since we were recommended by OCR. We can provide that service for you. Um training on providing the administrative room promoting safety precautions at every level. On, you know, the school site, school site safety, um having the teachers feel safe when they're in their classroom within themselves. And then reporting any form of discrimination or harassment that they might be perceiving or have as a lived experience. Um provide training on building trust with sensitive work-related issues. Provide resources to recr- recruit teachers of color and provide Oveas bullying tr- prevention training. So, overall recommendations, and these are based on the findings of the report. From in addressing the hostile environment environment presented in this report in the OCR resolution agreement. Review all survey findings with students, because especially high school or middle school. By now, the the middle school are probably either sophomore or juniors, maybe even graduating this year. Um the parents, very important, um that they know what's happening. I think the parents was one of the most targeted. Group that faced the worst type of discrimination, um according to the report. Survey, review all survey findings with staff, faculty and administrators. Uh we provided fifty copies, hardbound, spiral, like just like the ones you have, that Dr. Abrego can pass out to whoever he likes. Excuse me. We can provide, we can work with your IT to have a flip book put on your website. That they can review or they can download it, but may you have to disseminate the information to the public. And um we already provided this final report to Director of Office for Civil Rights, Dr. Aaron Romaine. And I believe the investigator was Virginia Cobb Wilson, and um so they have the fi- our final report. And now you have it, so we're we're fulfilling our two requirements at that end, and then presenting this. And the next step would be to work with you to provide some of this training. So, um discuss cultural expectations of district administrators to school administrators, faculty, staff. And all interested stakeholders. Um provide training and information for students on the prevention of student bullying. Oveas is is K twelve. And if you phase it in, start phasing it in a- at every level, then by the time your kindergarten gets to sixth grade. Then it's just a piece of cake on up because they they already know the culture of it. They know the Oveas program. And that really, we have data that we can provide on the success of the program. And it combines really well with PBIS and restorative justice as well, because I think that might be a couple of programs you have in place already or are thinking about. I could be wrong, though. So, provide training and information for students on the prevention of student bullying. Review and discuss the student handbook with students. Let them know what what their expectation, your expectation of how they should behave, what the rules are, how to report something. You know, the consequences, everything should be in that student handbook, and it should be the same thing for the parents and for your employees and staff as well, your teachers and staff. It should include the code of conduct, policies on reporting student bullying and report reporting and grievance procedures. Now, it might be a little bit too much for the younger grades, but if you simplify the language and explain to them, they they can grasp the. It might not be that ab- abstract for them. Thank you. So, we also recommend. That you work for all staff on creating a welcoming workplace environment. One thing I noticed about Adams is a very high, very dense concentration of Hispanic community families in the community. And there's really not much in Spanish or any other languages. I think you identified a total of thirty-four languages when we did the survey. We actually translated the survey into those languages, or you guys did. Um and we were able to put them online, and so the only two that were taken were English and Spanish. But by law, by requirements, by OCR, they had to be offered in the other languages as well. Um we also identified non-literate languages that, in other words, that was just oral, so we had interpreters to provide that for the parents as well. Provide training and information for all staff regarding harassment due to race, language or culture. Let them know that it's basically if if you target someone because of their race, it could be, and depending on the level. If it's how persistent, how pervasive and how se- severe it is, and that could be just one time or ten times. It could be then turn what to OCR and Department of Justice would find as a hostile environment. And then that could grow or manifest or be deemed a race hate crime, and that's what you want to avoid. And we're already, we're seeing a lot of that in our region right now with everything. with everything that's happening at the federal level, and we don't want that here. So just give them good information about that. Give them training about what constitutes, uh, discrimination, what'll be acceptable, what will not be acceptable, especially when it comes to Title Six. And the issue that the district had was related to national origin, which is covered under Title Six. And even though it was language and just targeted as, at, at the Mexican community, it covers anybody from a different national origin, including white majority. So staff, faculty, and, and, um, address all this in your staff, faculty, and administrators' code of conduct, their, their handbook. Show them, or let them know the policies on reporting workplace harassment and other grievances. Again, um, Title Nine will cover all that. We can work with Linda, um, Dr. Patterson, whatever. We do a lot of policy reviews and handbook reviews as well. And then also provide guidance on reporting and grievance procedures. Any questions? Wake up, you guys. So provide opportunity for parents, particularly the Spanish speaking families, to be involved at the learning at school sites. When I was doing the, the surveys and I was coming to the school and I was getting to, to know the, the, the community, I, I chose to do that because you have to build trust to come in and do the survey, and, and not just with the parents, but with the, the teachers, with the students. And, and you can't just come in and do this type of survey and this is what you're gonna do, you're gonna answer it, and you don't know me from Adam, and that's not right. So I was always invited to the Spanish speaking parent meetings, which I hope is not happening anymore, because you don't wanna segregate your parents, and they were being segregated. The English had their own, um, meetings, and the Spanish speaking parents had their separate meetings. You can combine it. You have the services to have an interpreter and a translator, so, so they can then be part of the leadership at the school. I effectively use all your parents. You know, there's six different types of effective parental involvement, and it, it has more to do than volunteering. Um, so there's, there's, the National Network of Partnership Schools model is one model that we recommend that can help address that. We can also provide more technical assistance to help address the school and, to help improve the school and workplace climate. We can also show students, parents, and all school employees. Oh, we recommend that you show where to find the grievance procedure in their handbooks and on the re- websites, and have them in both English and Spanish. Um, provide training for administrators and teachers on JESSA, generating expectations for student achievement. And then, um, there's also a separate training for administrators that is really effective as well. Thank you. So that's it, in a nutshell. I was told to cut it down, I did. But I can also come back and, and give you the spill on the eighty slides, or just email them to you and stuff, but they're all there. Those slides are just a reagurgitation of that report. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I would just like to make a, a comment for our board, because I wanna thank you for coming out here, and I have met with her on various occasions. And we did say that our, our goal, ultimate goal is to treat everyone what you expect, and I was being compliant. So we are going to continue to work, Dr. Parr. She's even offered to come in and, and give us some assistance. She's gonna be working with Dr. Patterson to making, making sure that we are in compliance, and we continue to move our district forward. So I wanna thank for being here today and for giving the board a, an update on the survey. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much, and my contact info is there? If you have any more questions, good evening.